Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the meeting. This is the March 13th study session of Littleton City Council. On this evening's agenda, we have two primary topics. One is a discussion regarding the proposed pre-inclusion agreement with South Metro Fire for Fire and Emergency Services. And then also, after that, we'll have a discussion regarding the concept of a capital projects reserve account regarding an ask of the voters to approve an inclusion agreement and then consequently, an adjustment in the mill levy. So we'll have presentations on both of those. I want to, first of all, welcome our guests here this evening, and I'd like to introduce those who are here. We have our partners and supporters here. Terry, is Terry here?
Not yet.
Okay. Renee?
Not yet.
All right, here we go. Carolyn!
You get me!
Carolyn?
Yeah, I know, it's your trouble.
Carolyn is a member of the Highlands Ranch Metro District Board. Let's see, Mark, is Mark here? Mark Lampert, he is South Metro Fire and Cunningham, and he sits on the authority, as an authority board member. Mike Delafrono, Mike is the South Metro Fire Assistant Chief. He's here as Chief Baker is out of town. Jim Alvey, he's Littleton Fire Protection District Board Member. And David Oppenheim, also Littleton Fire Protection District Board Member. Joel Heineman, I saw you. And Joel, obviously, is our Littleton Fire Association President. And Jeff Tasker, Jeff, he's in the back corner, in the corner, he is the Littleton Fire Division And here comes Terry. Terry Nolan, welcome. He's Highlands Ranch Metro District Director. So, we, kind of the way that the study session will run is that the staff will make a presentation to council. Council has received, obviously, all the information in the packet, had a chance to review it. We've also spent time with staff and an opportunity to flesh out some early questions and concerns. And so, staff will be making a presentation to us, and council, council has the opportunity to ask staff questions. If council has a question that goes beyond asking Chief Armstrong or Tiffany, then I think we know, let me know that you'd like a question to be asked of perhaps one of our partners, and we'll work on how we address that. They are not specifically here to answer questions, but if there's something that comes up where we feel that it would be appropriate for that, I think that we would allow that. At this point, though, let's try to keep our questions and our conversation with staff. So, council, the desired outcome for this evening is to have council give direction to staff as to whether or not we want to advance a fire agreement with South Metro, in particular, the one we'll be looking at, and the ordinance for the public funds, they really go hand in hand. If in fact, staff, if in fact, council is interested in advancing this, asking staff to advance it, it will show up on an April 3 regular meeting as a first reading. We'll set the public hearing for that for April 17, and that'll be the second reading. I would like to take a little break in what we're, and ask the city attorney to please give a very brief synopsis of why we are looking at, why we are looking at, at making this decision in April. Because we know that we are not looking at, we have a ballot issue until November, our partners know that they need to go in May, but why are we looking at putting this on as a, getting this through by April, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. Mayor, Council, the reason that we are looking at this in April is, in Colorado special districts, particularly a fire district, they have to go through a court process to have the court approve a proposed inclusion and order an election. So if that process takes about two months, so if the South Metro Fire District, for example, started that process in May, it would not be done until July. Now, everyone thinks, well, that's still lots of time, November is coming up, but we do mail ballot elections, so we have to prepare the ballot, ballot has to be prepared, arguments have to be eligible to be submitted, and ballots go out in October. So by the time you get to the middle of July, and then you start the other preparation mechanisms, November is literally right around the corner. So that's why this is coming in April, because the district has to have this step in place in order for them to file necessary court proceedings for an inclusion election.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. Chief Armstrong?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. We have a presentation we're gonna kind of tag team for you this evening. Certainly be happy to answer questions as we move along. I'm gonna take care of the first part for you. So really, what we're gonna do tonight in this part of the presentation is concentrate on the fire services portion of the agenda. Go ahead to the next slide. Just a real quick, real quick walk down memory lane, what got us here tonight. All of you know that this has been a long, long, and tedious process, but we felt that there were three key components that really led us here tonight. The first one was the letter we received from our partners terminating their contract with Littleton Fire Rescue. We received that back in November of 2017, and that would take effect December 31, 2018. That initial step caused us to have to evaluate how we would provide Fire and Emergency Services in our community in one short year. So that really started the ball rolling. In December, council, remember that we had a study session where we talked a lot about various options. We looked at standalone options, we looked at what the service capabilities of that would be, we looked at what the cost would be. We had conversations about West Metro, we had conversations about South Metro as well as Denver Fire, and we're gonna revisit that tonight. At the end of that study session, we even talked about possibly going out for RFPs, and we talked a lot about service. What would our service levels be in Littleton? And I left there feeling pretty good that service was the most important thing for council to consider in making their decision forward for our, so at the end of the evening, the direction given by council to the city manager and ultimately staff was to enter into negotiations with South Metro to provide a service. On February 3, we came back to council at your council workshop and had long conversations about Fire and EMS services as well as financial sustainability over the long term. And staff and the city manager and the city attorney laid out some methodologies to obtain fire services and pay for them, in which the end result from council was direction to the city manager and ultimately staff to continue to proceed down that path for an So currently, this map will illustrate what our fire services look like. We currently have nine stations, we run eight medic units, we have seven engines, two aerial devices, and one battalion chief. This model goes away December 31, 2018. Our fire partners terminating their contract with us really takes us from that model down to three stations and the ability to provide some level of service without our fire partners. January 1, this is what the new map looks like. Our partners are now gonna be receiving Fire and EMS services from South Metro. Littleton is highlighted in red, and you'll see that the bottom-left portion, that large area is Lockheed Martin, which we have an obligation and contract to provide services to. Up above is Trailmark, and just above that is Fairview Meadowbrook. Those are all the areas that Littleton has, had to figure out, has to figure out how we're gonna provide service. Go ahead to the next slide. This slide, I wanna take a little bit of time. This is the slide that we spoke with council about at the, at the council workshop. This was our internal evaluation based on service delivery that helped us identify what we felt would be the best provider and long-term sustainability for fire services in Littleton. The criteria that we set, looking at Firebase EMS, is it an accredited fire department? Do they have an ISO rating of two or better, were the service levels that we, as a group, decided we wanted to provide our community. It was as close as we could come to what we currently have now without decreasing our service capabilities to our citizens. So we looked and compared each of the departments across the board in these service levels, and you can clearly see that two of these providers stand out, South Metro and West Metro. And if you look at the bottom and we go down to the cost of those services, again, it's very clear on who provides the greatest level of service at the most affordable cost. Based on this chart and the information in that chart, the direction from council was for us to continue negotiations with South Metro, which brings us here today. So key decision factors that we, that we had in looking at South Metro and making that decision was first, and not first and foremost, but one significant, was long-term cost savings. Some differences between what we do today and the method that we're going down this road with South Metro is full inclusion eliminates the need for the city to pay for Fire and EMS services out of the general fund, and it also eliminates future capital investments for any fire department services or capital projects such as apparatus, stations, things of that nature. That in turn, which Tiffany, I'm sure, is gonna touch on, really changes the financial outlook for the city in terms of cost outlays for Fire and EMS services with inclusion. I wanna spend a little bit of time talking about accreditation. We use accreditation as a term to say, you know, this department is good because it's accredited, but a lot of people don't really understand what accreditation means. Accreditation is a third-party independent review of an organizational's policies and procedures and how they operate. We enjoy accreditation with our police department. Kalia is a police accrediting agency. They come into the city every few years, and they evaluate everything our fire department does. I'm sorry, police, thank you. If I remember correctly, Chief Stevens, if I remember correctly, said that there's somewhere in the neighborhood of around 300 different standards that they're evaluating on, and each one of those standards, they have to meet in order to maintain their accreditation. The same is true in a fire accreditation. Things that they look at are community baselines, what's the level of service that we're providing now? We have to, we have to look at previous achievements and accomplishments, we have to look at fire station locations, our staffing procedures and methods, what is our performance in our service delivery? We have to look at current levels of service, we have to look at physical and human resources, our asset capabilities. We have to look at how many engine companies we have, how many medic units, how many stations, what are our staffing levels? It goes on, it looks at risk assessment. Each individual community that an accredited organization provides service to has to do a risk assessment of that community, and their ability to provide service has to be based on the risks associated with that community. We've never done that in Littleton. We went through the process of developing a master plan, and we were looking at methods and ways to improve our service. Our costs, we were watching go up and exceed potentially after full master plan implementation, the cost of South Metro, and we would still not be anywhere near the level of an accredited department. So it looks at community risk factors, it looks at the average area protected by initial companies, so how far are the closest engines, what's the square miles per engine that each engine is covering or a ladder truck is covering? It looks at population density per square mile, and it develops whether we're urban or suburban community and what our response time should be. Talks about structural risk assessments, how many, how many, what's the number of structures and type of structures in our, in our community? Are they high-risk, significant risk, maximum risk, things like hospitals, things like Lockheed Martin, and what is our capability to provide services to those types of facilities? It goes on to talk about standards and goals and objectives. It looks at defining what is your acceptable level of risk in your community. Certainly, we can't mitigate all risk, but our job is to try to mitigate as much risk as we can and determine what that acceptable risk level is. And then it looks especially at response times by population density. In our service currently, we have response times that exceed seven, eight minutes. In an accredited department, they follow strict response time standards in order to maintain their accreditation. We also have to go through what we call critical tasking capabilities of our, of our, our resources. If you remember, I gave you an example a while back ago when we talked about a standalone department, how many resources it would take to mitigate a structure fire? How many, how many members of the fire department does it take to do search and rescue? How many does it take to do roof operations? How many does it take to do an interior attack or a primary search? We have to identify those numbers ahead of time based on the risks identified in a community and make sure that we're meeting those standards in order to be accredited. So this is just a few examples of some of the things that go into accreditation. Then the beauty about considering South Metro as a service provider is that at some point in time, they're gonna have to redevelop their accreditation plan, which means they're gonna come into our community, and they're gonna look at all these things for us and develop a plan to make sure they're covered so they maintain their accreditation, which results for us in a greater level of service. So, I could sit here, I'm sure I could probably bring Chief Delafrono up, and he could go on for hours about accreditation, because he knows much more about it than I do. This is just a small tidbit of some of the things that go along with accreditation. It's a whole host of things. It's prevention services, it's inspection services for our businesses. All of those things lead to safer communities. That's why departments strive to be accredited like our police department. It gives, it gives the public a sense of confidence that not only are their tax dollars being spent wisely, but they're getting the best level of service according to best practices and industry standards. We want the same level of confidence in our community for our fire department as we've given them for the police department.
I thought you wanted more.
I'll take equal. So we talked a little bit about response times with the accreditation, improved ISO rating. South Metro, like us, recently was evaluated by the insurance service organization, and they go through a whole host of criteria. They look at your response capabilities, they look at your water supply, they look at your dispatch center, they look at your training records, they look at your pre-fire plans of your businesses, your inspection records, your training and certification records of your members, and based on your ability to provide service to your community, they rate your fire department. We were, in 2014, a Class III department. Shortly after my arrival, we made some changes, and ISO had come in after about a decade and reevaluated us, and we approved to a Class II department. South Metro recently improved to a Class I department. Now, the reason I bring this up is, is important, because we're gonna be talking about finances and inclusions, and what does that mean for, for our taxpayers? We believe that an ISO rating of one, improving from a two to a one, could potentially lower people's homeowner insurance for fire coverage in our community, businesses and residences. As an example, there's a South Metro firefighter that we know who lives in Parker, who recently received that improvement in their ISO rating and saved nearly $300 a year on their homeowner's insurance. And so, our message to people in the community is call your insurance company and ask them, what happens if our fire department improves from a Class II to a Class I? Will I have any savings on my business insurance or my homeowner's insurance? Depending on who you use, and, you know, there's no set way that it happens, some people might see some benefits, some might not, but that's important to know. A Class I protection is, is not easy to get, it's like accreditation. There's only so many Class I departments in the United States, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe South Metro, there's only 39 or 390 Class I accredited departments in the United States, is that right?
I think it's not 50.
Fifty-six. So, that's, it's a huge accomplishment, something to be proud of, and I think something that our community could be proud of if we had a fire department of that stature providing a service.
Chief, it's, it's not a matter that only so many can be a Class I, it's, you gotta meet the level, right?
The criteria.
That's correct.
Theoretically, everybody could be, but in real life, that just doesn't happen.
That's correct, that, that's accurate. It's really a decision of finances, because reaching that level might require additional people, additional stations, additional apparatus, so it's really a commitment of the community of what level of service they want, do they wanna make the investment to accomplish it or not? And that's really the only thing that prohibits them. There are small departments that are, you know, three or four stations that could be a Class I department if they made the investment to reach that level. Next on the list is firefighters retain position and standing. You know, when we first started having this conversation, the fire chiefs especially, and the union presidents, all agreed that, you know, taking care of our people was, was one of our top priorities, not just the people we serve, but the people who serve them. You know, Denver has in their charter that they're not allowed to take people higher than firefighter one, for example. So if, if we have a 20-year employee who's been, you know, a captain serving this community at that level of rank for 10 years, they would be required to go through a fire academy and, and transfer over as a firefighter in that system, it's just the way their system's set up. We don't have those boundaries with South Metro. We were able to sit and negotiate with them that our people would keep their seniority, they're gonna allow them to transfer over sick time, so they've made a lot of extra effort to really ensure that our firefighters are well taken care of, that their community, that the service to the community that's, that they've already given was recognized and acknowledged, and it was, it was, it's been well received not only by our firefighters, but by the South Metro firefighters as well. And then last is a long-term solution, you know? Inclusion into South Metro, it can't be undone unless the voters vote for it. Contracts can be canceled, we're here as a result of that. This is, in my opinion, the only permanent solution to Fire and EMS services in the city of Littleton. The taxpayers get to vote for it, and the only way you get rid of it is the taxpayers have to say they don't want it anymore. In addition, it takes costs out of control of government. Their mill levy is set and can't be changed without a public vote. So the long-term sustainability is there not only for the service and for the city, but also protecting our taxpayers from future increases unless they agree to it. You know, contracts for services change, they, they're negotiated, and it's not subject to public approval, it's subject to policymaker approval. So those are not permanent solutions, and, and one of our tasks was to look for a more permanent solution to our Fire and EMS services, and I, I feel pretty comfortable that, that we've, we've done a good job in doing that. So with that, that ends my part of the presentation, and I'll take it over to Steve to talk a little bit about some of the specifics of the agreement.
Mayor, council, in your packet was a draft pre-inclusion agreement, and the reason it's drafted is we still are negotiating some things with South Metro. South Metro's lawyer and I have a very good working relationship. We, the issues are not what I would view as significant, they're just making sure that before I bring to you an agreement, I have an agreement I'm fully and completely comfortable with. I believe we will get there, but the agreement you see in your packet tonight is draft for that reason. But I, there are enough things in this draft agreement that are not But I, there are enough things in this draft agreement that are not going to change that you want to cover those so that you can take that into account in providing your direction. Now, this is called a pre-inclusion agreement, or you could call it a pre-unification agreement. And what this is, this is the foundation. I would describe this as if you're building a house, this is the foundation of the house. There's going to be other agreements that will come to you for your review and approval, but this is the basis for everything that's going to happen. And Council should be fully comfortable with it because this is the bridge that you cross on April 17th. When you cross this bridge, you've crossed the bridge to South Metro. This is it. This is the basis for everything else that will happen. Now, the underlying purpose of this agreement is to move to a single unified fire protection district that's going to provide fire services. And I'm just going to use this term, fire services. Now, for the audience, when I use that term, I mean not just fire suppression services, not just fire inspection, and not just emergency medical, but the whole realm of fire services. But I'm just going to use this term, fire services, and when I mean, I mean it all. Now, under Colorado law, for entities to join in the district and become part of the district, there has to be a vote of the people in that district. In fact, there's going to be votes in Highlands Ranch and in Lurton Fire Protection District in May, and those voters have to approve inclusion in order for them to go into the district. The city is looking at a vote on inclusion in the November election. So somebody might ask, but why didn't you go in May? Well, we were further down the track than the districts were in negotiations with South Metro. And as I mentioned at the beginning, there's a statutory process for doing an inclusion election, and we simply were not as far down the process as the districts were to where you could have got, done an agreement, gone through the inclusion court filings, and that's why we are looking at a November election. Now, the cost of that election is going to be split, and by the election, we're talking only the Littleton election. We're not talking about everybody else's election, just our election. And that's going to be split 50% between us and the city of Littleton. Now, for the voter signature.
Between us and the city of Littleton?
I mean, the city, yeah, between the city of Littleton and South Metro.
Because that would be four.
Yes, that would be four. That's correct. The city of Littleton and South Metro.
You said us, it's him in the frog in his pocket.
And it was like, I was discussing something and I asked, I was referencing the decision of the Colorado Supreme Court, and lo and behold, I said the Arizona Supreme Court. But it was, that, that can happen. And essentially, it will be 50% between us and South Metro. Now, if the inclusion election passes, then upon the canvas of the election results, the city would then become included in the district effective January 1, 2019. And what, how is the district governed? The district has its own seven-member governing board, and like any governing board, it has to be made out of members of districts of equal population. So the district will have to go through a redistricting process and adjust the population of its members. And every district that, within the district, will get to elect a member. Now, we also will talk about what's known as a fire authority in a few minutes. The difference between the district and an authority. A district is a creation of state law. The state legislature created that political subdivision. An authority is a political subdivision created by an intergovernmental agreement. So it's not a creation per se of the legislature, it's a creation of an intergovernmental agreement. You see a lot of authorities in the world of public transit, in, in the world of housing, where there may be an underlying state statute and then the actual authority is created by an agreement. But this pre-unification agreement addresses both. And you're saying, well, why does it address both? Well, what happens if the voters do not approve inclusion in November? Then the city becomes a member of the South Metro Fire Authority. It is an authority created by South Metro. Currently Cunningham is a member, and the same would be true with both Lurton Fire Protection District and Highlands Ranch. If their voters did not approve inclusion in the district, they would become members of the authority. Now, for our practical purposes, the average citizen, you and I really wouldn't notice any difference whether something's from the authority or something is from the district. It's all the same. Except the authority is a, serves as an overarching governing board with South Metro participating and any of these other entities who are part of the authority, but their voters have not approved inclusion in the district. Now, in the agreement, what it provides for is, is that if the voters approve inclusion, essentially, the city will leave the fire service business and all of the stations and all of the equipment will be turned over to South Metro. Now, for the average person, you're not going to really notice any difference. There'll be a truck that responds to your car on December 31st, and there'll be a truck that responds to your car on January 1st. And that truck may still say Lurton Fire Rescue on it. All of that will happen in due course, but the thing that I think's most, first point that's most important to assure the citizens is that if there's inclusion, you're going to have service on December 31st, you're going to have service on December 1st, period. No ifs, no ands, no buts, period. Now, if inclusion is approved, then you will become subject in the 2019 year to South Metro's mill levy. And Tiffany will be talking about how the differences between that and the city's mill levy. But inclusion will mean that you will be subject to that. And as I mentioned, okay, what happens if the voters say no to inclusion? The city, effective that day, will become a member of the South Metro Fire Authority. The city will, instead of paying for fire services through its budget, will pay an equivalent amount to what 9.25 mils would be to South Metro directly. And there were, this agreement will stay in place until either inclusion is approved or until the parties would enter into some other form of agreement or terminate it. The intent here is, is to move to inclusion. But we can't have a situation, obviously, where we do an agreement that provides for inclusion, the voters say no, and on November, the question becomes, what's the fire protection? So this agreement covers both eventualities. What the citizens, I think the most important thing for the citizens to understand is, this agreement ensures whether it's South Metro Fire Authority or South Metro Fire District, that there is going to be fire services in the city of Littleton on January 1, 2019. Now, there will be a couple of other agreements in particular that you will be seeing in the next few months. One is, we have one station that we need, we will be leasing to South Metro, but we will not reconvene over. And that's Station 11 here on this complex. That station was built at a time and when it served the city's purposes. However, long-term, with a consolidated fire district, South Metro may well look at a different location for that station, simply because in terms of response times and the very things Chief Armstrong alluded to in accreditation, if you're an accredited fire department, and I've gone through that process in my prior city, we were having accredited fire departments. One of the things you look at is station location and how station location interacts with all of your other stations. So there'll be a lease for that. The city also has an information systems backup at Station 12, and we will be making, providing a lease for that as well, because we need to maintain that backup facility for our information systems. And so we will address that, both of those by separate lease agreements.
The, the real estate stays ours.
The real estate, if we go into the authority and for some reason we leave the authority, the real estate will come back to us. If we go into the district, the real estate will be turned over to the district, except for Station number 11.
And is that ours, just our stations or all, the nine stations?
Uh, well, the, some of the stations are titled in our partner's name. So they were today, without speaking for them, but their agreements I've read, and they also require them to turn over their property. So it's their, since their agreements require that, yes, our nine stations are going to be in the name of South Metro, except for this one.
But you said Station 12 though, because we have.
Station 12, we will lease a portion of that space for our information systems.
We'll lease from South Metro.
South Metro, yes. And so those agreements will come to you separately, but they will be part of this, as well as, as you can imagine, with a variety of personal and real property towards the end of this year, there will be a whole series of things like bills of sale and real estate documents that will come to you to approve too. It's just, those would be premature at this point until we have the foundation. They're kind of like the roof of the house, and you don't put the roof on first, you put the roof on after you've got the foundation and built the walls. And we, those will all be coming, but they'll be coming down the road after this, because this is the fundamental basic policy decision that you're going to make. Now, I've talked a lot about the provisions of this agreement, and then one area that we'll be addressing is, the city has a couple of contracts that provides fire service for Meadowbrook and Lockheed. And we will be addressing each of those with subsequent documents as well. And they will be coming to you, but this agreement will simply recognize those are going to be addressed. And they, the thing is, is when, if an entity like Lockheed, for example, it's a large entity, and it just simply takes some time to get all the things necessary through their processes to have anything addressed, but we've had discussions and negotiations with them, and I am confident that will all fall in place. So I've talked a bit about the agreement, and now I'm going to refer it over to Tiffany, who's going to talk about the really important stuff, money, and what does this cost me?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
So I just wanted to kind of put some, some things in perspective for citizens, for people who may not understand the whole depth of property taxes related to their homes or their businesses. So the chart that you see before you is a snapshot of the allocation of property taxes to residential property valued at about $370,000. So what I wanted to show here is that you can see property taxes go to a number of entities. They go to the school district, they go to Rappel County, South Suburban has a piece of that as well, and then we've kind of carved out the city of Littleton piece. And so I just wanted to give some perspective as to the amount of property taxes that come to the city of Littleton on your whole bill, because I think there may be a misconception that the $2,000 or $2,100 that you pay goes directly to one entity, and that's just not the case. So we just wanted to put it in perspective. And the city of Littleton portion is about 8% of the total. The total, and this is an annual snapshot of that, the total's about $2,150 for, for a property of $370,000. So one of the things that we're going to talk about a little bit later in the capital piece of this is an opportunity for, an ask of citizens. And what that is, is, we tried to break it out here to kind of show you where we're going with this, but essentially, the ask of citizens is to add a 9.25 mil levy to your property taxes. And with that, what the city is going to be doing on the other end of that is we're going to be reducing the mill levy for the city of Littleton. So currently, the mill levy is 6.662. It's about $177 a year for a property owner. We're going to reduce that down to $53. And then we're going to ask the citizens to add the 9.25 onto their property taxes as well. So the net increase is about $122 a year, to put it in perspective. Now, we had mentioned the ISO earlier in the presentation, which is an opportunity that citizens might have to contact their insurance agent to see if they could get a reduction in their insurance premiums for their resident or their commercial property. So we kind of want to keep that kind of, in, in, kind of like an asterisk, that even though there may be an increase to the property taxes, there is the option that you could maybe reduce your premium based on the ISO rating. So we just want to keep that in perspective. So what does that mean to a property owner if you want to dial it down to a monthly change? The monthly net change to a property owner is about $10.19 a month. The $20.54 is the increase for the 9.25 mils for South Metro. The $10.35 decrease is when the city of Littleton is going to decrease their mill levy down to two. And so the change to a property owner would be about $10.19 a year, or a month, I'm sorry. Now, commercial properties also do pay property taxes to entities as well. So we wanted to give you an idea of how that was going to impact a commercial property. I'm using an example of about a million dollars. And I think it's important to note that property taxes for commercial properties are assessed a little differently than residents. Currently, and we've talked about this before, currently, the residential rate is a 7.2% of your actual value. So if your value's $370,000, you're going to be assessed on the 7.2% for property tax purposes. So for a commercial property, it's a little different. It's 29%. They are taxed at a higher rate. So the net increase to a commercial property, based on a million dollars of value, is about $110, $111 a month. One thing that I did want to mention is the state of Colorado issued in late December an estimate for the next residential assessment rate evaluation, and currently, they're predicting that that may go down. They've estimated to 6.11% versus the current, which is 7.2. And if you remember, the previous rate was 7.96. And that's just in relation to the value of commercial properties and residential properties in Colorado as a whole. There's a whole formula related to 45% comes from residential, 55% from commercial, and they adjust it. So just, just so you're aware, they are predicting another decrease on the residential side.
What, did you say that was to 6.1?
6.11.
When the assessed percentage goes down for residential, does it go up toward commercial?
It does not. The commercial is staying at the 29%. What's making the, the difference or the change is the value on commercial properties is, is high enough that they're over that 55, 45% limit. And so Colorado State Statute requires, the Gallagher Amendment requires that you reduce the residential side of that to compensate for that. So when we're talking about fire, you know, we, we keep talking about the city's no longer going to have fires and costs in their general fund or their capital projects fund. Currently, based on 2018 budget numbers, fire costs are about 7.1 million. What that includes is fire service, EMS service, a portion for capital, and the dispatch. And then there's an administrative, administrative fee equivalent that we've accounted for in that. And so if the, if the fire costs are transferred onto the property tax owners, the city's no longer going to have that $7.1 million expense. And I, I think it's worth mentioning, the 7.1 is actually fairly low compared to prior years, just based on capital purchases. I know 2018, we don't have a lot of capital that we anticipated replacing. Normally, you know, we might have a million wells, we might have a medic unit, we might have a couple of medic units or a fire engine. We didn't have, have any of that in 2018. So technically, the costs are probably a little understated in 2018. They may be closer to about 7.6 or 7.7 if we had normal capital expenditures that we've had in the past. So with the fire costs eliminated for the city of Littleton, we acknowledge that that is going to occur, and so what we're proposing is to reduce the mill levy. I've talked about that. We want to reduce it from 6.662 to 2 million so that we can mitigate the impact to mitigate the impact to, uh, a citizen to their property taxes.
Tiffany, I mean, I missed it, um, when you were back at the 7.1 million, did that, did that factor in the income from the administrative fee?
It did not. It, it, it incorporated an equivalent to the city of, for the City of Littleton, so about $300,000 of, the 7.1 is an admin fee equivalent.
Okay.
So one thing that we have the opportunity to do at this point is, if we're no longer going to have the fire costs at 7.1, and we're going to reduce our revenues by 4 million, that leaves a difference of 3.1 million still to the city. And so, the city, what we would do is, we would dedicate that to streets and infrastructure improvements. We know that we have a deficit in our, addressing our street and infrastructure, and this is one way that we can at least, uh, address the street portion of that. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the street portion and the, uh, capital reserve account that we're going to be talking about a little bit later. That's what the, that's what we're asking, is we, we would like to dedicate the $3.1 million, so the difference between the 7.1, the 4 million, the 3.1, we want to dedicate it to capital, because we know we have a, a severe need for capital improvements in the City of Littleton. We've talked at length about that, um, with Council, we've had several study sessions, we've seen five-year plans. You know, currently, the only revenue that we have to help pay for capital is our building use taxes, and they fluctuate, we know that, they fluctuate based on the building level in the City of Littleton, and the average is about 1.5, we have some years that it's 2.5, we've had years that it's less than a million. And if that's the only dedicated revenue source that we have for capital improvements, we need, we need to address that sooner rather than later. So I tried not to get, um, too detailed, which I, I feel like I have a tendency to, to dive in and get into the detail, and one of my challenges, I will tell you, is, um, rounding, and I don't like to round, I like to go to the exact dollar. Um, so this was a struggle for me, but bear with me, and we will get through this hopefully. Um, so there's some long-term impacts to the City of Littleton, we know that, there's going to be an impact for revenues, expenditures, there's going to be some one-time costs. So I just quickly want to go through those, so that you're aware of what those long-term impacts are to the City of Littleton. Um, so the one thing is that, we've already discussed, we're going to reduce the mill levy, 6.662 down to 2 million dol-, or 2.0, that's about a $4 million difference, we've talked about that. We want to do that to, to help offset the increase to property taxes to, uh, property owners. Another part of that is specific ownership. So specific ownership tax is what the, uh, the city gets, it's, uh, it's collected on your, um, uh, your what, I'm sorry, your auto tax, uh, when you go to register your vehicle, there's an ownership, a specific ownership tax on your registration. That money is collected by the county, and it's divvied up amongst the entities based on their property mill. So whatever percentage of the total property mill levies in the State of Colorado, we get a portion of that. If we reduce our property tax mill from 6.662 to 2, we're going to reduce our specific ownership tax, so it's just a, kind of a, I don't know, because we're reducing our property taxes, we're just going to get less in specific ownership tax, so we have to take that into account.
Do you know how much?
Um, I'm estimating about $272,000.
Okay.
From what?
Um, currently, I think the budget is, uh, $385,000, so I think it's going to go down by about $272,000. And that's an estimate, you know, it depends on, are there new districts out there that might get a portion of property taxes, and it, you know, it changes, it's kind of hard to find the actual formula from the state. But it's a factor in this. The other thing that Steve alluded to is the Lockheed Martin and the Meadowbrook contracts, currently we have contracts with those two entities, so we're going to be addressing those individually, um, to see what the impact is. For my purposes, I've assumed that we're no longer going to receive revenues for that. So again, it's a, it's a part of the, the impact of the change. The other one is the loss of the administrative fees, um, from the fire partners. Currently, the fire partners pay about $760,000 in an admin fee to the City of Littleton, that's to offset costs related to finance, HR, um, there's, um, IS, a lot of those costs, uh, so it's a, I believe it's a 4.91% administrative fee that they pay us currently. Another part of the equation is, we're no longer going to have that, and I'll kind of touch on, uh, that a little bit more. And then there's some other mitigating factors or implications, uh, we will, we will no longer collect EMS revenues, part of the equation, and then plan review revenues, and then there's some other small, uh, med, med unit revenues that we will be receiving as well. So on the expense side, I think the, the largest, uh, issue is that we're no longer going to be paying for fire costs, the 7.1 million. Currently, we have a dispatch contract, uh, we pay about $300,000 a year for that contract. If, uh, if we are included in South Metro, that, that contract will be terminated, because it'll be included in the 9.25 mills, so that's a savings to the city. I think one of the, the biggest things related to expenses is there's no future capital costs for fire. We're not going to have to refurb our stations, we're not going to have to buy any medic units, we're not going to have to buy any, uh, fire apparatus for that. Um, the one exception is Station 11, and, uh, Steve talked about that, we're going to maintain ownership of that station. But I think what's important is that, depending on the length of that lease with South Metro, I believe there's plans to, uh, build another station. If, if we were to build a station, we would have to pay those costs out of the City of Littleton coffers, we would have to fund that, the building of that station. With South Metro, it's going to be part of the 9.25 mill, so we will not, our citizens will not be paying anything additional related to new apparatus, new medic units, new engines, new stations, that's all included in the 9.25.
On the dispatch, going back to dispatch, where we already recognized the savings as far as expenditures, right, did you calculate that in there as well?
Yeah, so originally, um, I, I hate seeing numbers off the top of my head, but originally, I believe, it was, uh, the City of Littleton's share was about 405,000 or something in the 2018 budget, and since we negotiated that contract with South Metro, it went down to less than 300,000, it's about 300,000. So I'm including the 300,000 that we're actually paying today.
So the 7.1 includes the 300,000?
Yes.
What if Station 11 needs repairs, the building?
The building itself? So I think it kind of depends, um, uh, there'll be discussions on the lease agreement, some lease agreements include operations and maintenance for that, uh, building, some don't, so it's going to really depend on, uh, how that lease is framed, how that lease agreement is framed. Depends on that. Certainly, utilities and things of that nature would be included in that, but it, it's going to depend on how that's.
Will, will we receive income off of that, off that lease?
Um, I'm not anticipating any income off of that.
It's just an agreement that we will still own it, but you guys can use it, it's free rent. This is no cost.
Right.
So if we own it, and we use it, who has liability?
We would still have the liability for the building itself, so it would still be included in, like, our property liability.
So operating costs of.
Any property that we own, that we lease, we, within our insurance package, build what we call an owner's policy to cover that. Now, South Metro, they will have their own policy that will cover it as well, but because there's always residual liability, they will cover that.
Now, I'm assuming then, hopefully correctly, that in the negotiations, you're going to have put together a, a plan, like a five-year plan of some sort, where they may move Station 11 to somewhere other location.
Yes.
And the reason I'm thinking that is because the city needs to expand.
Yes, the intent would be that the lease agreement would be for a five-year term, capable of being renewed, because realistically, from South Metro's standpoint, uh, I would not expect the, and I don't want to speak for South Metro, but I don't think the movement of that station's wide view is immediate. It's probably closer to the five to 10-year range than anything in the immediate.
So it is addressed, then, will be addressed?
There will be addressed, in the lease agreement that I've brought to you.
And Jerry, you brought up a good, um, observation, is that if they were to vacate, and we were no longer to use this as a fire station, that would allow additional space for the city, which we know we have issues with currently, we were doing a space needs assessment. So that could potentially free up some space for, uh, employees that are located in this building. The other thing, and I, I put this as an expense, because, uh, you know, we would like to dedicate that 3.1 million dollars to capital and infrastructure, specifically streets. Um, and so, it would, it would be shown as an expense for the City of Littleton, because we would be taking that money from the general fund and putting it into the capital projects fund. And again, there's some other, uh, smaller expenses that are just kind of a factor of the change in fire services. The fire training center, we, uh, spend about $33,000 a year currently, we would no longer have to pay that $33,000 for the training center.
In regard to that, the 3.1, then, it, it isn't like newfound money, but does that, and we're going to dedicate it to, to roads, that kind of infrastructure type of stuff. In our budget, we already, uh, budget a million, which is not adequate, of course.
Right.
So does this mean we're still going to budget, say, a million, then add the estimated 3.1 on top of that?
Right, so currently in our five-year plan, we have the 1.4 million that we get from HUTF, that we're required to spend on streets and infrastructure.
Gas tax.
The gas tax. So this would be in addition to the 1.4 million. So we would actually be dedicating about 3.45 million dollars to streets and.
So then as a percentage of whatever we put in, uh, historically, into roads, we'll continue that.
Now, in fact, the presentation we have, kind of part B of this evening here, talks a little more detail specifically about that. Um, we have a study that we did back in 2014 that talks about the level of investment we should be making on roads, just the pavement section, and so we, we know that we, obviously, we struggled with that here in recent years, we've tried to raise the level of spending, but we're still far below that recommended spending level. And so, this proposal here would not only meet that standard that was recommended back in 2014, but we want to kind of describe for you kind of the boundaries in that draft ordinance to help you understand, it's not just pavement, but it's also crew gutter, sidewalk, signal systems, and kind of all the related maintenance of the public right way.
I guess what I'm thinking of, with, with, uh, essentially, as I, that the mill of 2. whatever is new, would be new, and I, I guess, I just don't want to say, okay, great, we have this new pot of money over here, so we're not, so now we have this other million to spend elsewhere.
I understand completely, and I think that's been a concern here, we talked, even at the retreat here, so the intent is to take this 3 million, add to the 1.4 in gas tax, and again, that fluctuates, we talked about the vulnerability of the gas tax here every year, the legislature kind of messes with it, but, but it is purely dedicated for only one purpose, and you, it's not an opportunity to somehow move something out, this is dedicated purely for street maintenance.
Um, I, I'm, I'm going to make this statement, but I, I want to hold, hold it for when we talk about the capital. So we, we keep talking about 3 million, um, but that is, you know, the, the 3 million will be coming out of the general fund every year, even though our general fund may fluctuate depending on so many factors. Um, and we also talked about this at the council retreat, that maybe it should be a percentage or some other factor as opposed to a fixed dollar amount. Um, so I do want to table that for when we talk about the capital, um, ordinance.
Good, we have some rationale that we want to share with Council, see if that meets your expectations.
So a question, so what happens to the fire training center?
That's an asset, along with the stations and apparatus that would be transferred over to South Metro. Their intention is to continue to utilize that training facility for stations on this side of their district.
So again, any future capital improvements to the training center would be borne by South Metro after an inclusion?
It's our property.
Currently, today it is, but part of the inclusion is to transfer all the fire assets to South Metro, which that would be part of that.
Well, in actuality, we only own 12.5% of that property. The ownership is shared amongst, South Metro currently owns 25% of that property, West Metro owns 25% of that property, we own 12.5, and Littleton Fire Protection District also owns 12.5%. So we're only a, we're only a minority owner of that property currently.
The other, isn't the other 25%, is that Inglewood?
Oh, yes, yes.
So we will be working on some separate agreements to deal with the training center, because, uh, reality of it is, is that it is not used by a number of these entities, and so the intent would be to try to work on, separate from this transaction, some agreements to bring some of that ownership back in the city. I've had some very preliminary discussions with Inglewood, and I would expect we would also have some discussions with the Fire Protection District on that as well.
But we have had some, I'm trying to remember which groups I've been out there, let's see, response team training, was it?
CERT training.
Or, yeah, the CERT training. So would we, would that group still have some access out there?
Uh, I'm sure that we could probably work something out, I would imagine, and South Metro probably works along with several other agencies to do those kind of classes, so.
That's a good, good space and a good activity.
And, and in conversations with South Metro, it may not even be necessary for us to negotiate with the other owners, it may be simply that we transfer our ownership to South Metro, making them a larger owner, and let them negotiate with the other, um, the balance of the entities that own it, and negotiate their own outcomes for that.
I was going to say, there would be some financial obligation to buy out Inglewood and West Metro, but if we do that, that would be left to South Metro.
Does Inglewood own it or Denver?
Inglewood.
So Inglewood, El Alto?
Yes. They had on to it, they didn't assign it, and, uh, so I've had some very preliminary discussions with the city attorney about, uh, what might be done with that, and so, uh, as we progress down that road, that would certainly be something that I'd be talking with the Council about.
Pat, did you have a question?
Yeah, Tiffany, I'm just trying to get straight my head apart, so the net, uh, uh, charge to the citizen, uh, as far as the mills will be what? So you take your nine?
$10.19.
I understand, but what's that, translated to mill?
11.25.
11.25, going from 6.662 to 4.5.
Okay, okay, 11.25.
I have a, I have a question back on that, um, our training center, and this is, this is, I don't know if it will ever happen, but if there should ever become an opportunity where South Metro may want to sell that, or get rid of that center for whatever reasons, can we do like a first right of refusal? The reason I say that is because the center is located in a place where there's a tremendous opportunity for, um, an open space capital there, and we have, um, it's right up against the river and the trail, and Big Dry Creek, and we put a park in there, we have a trailhead, um, we also have the Humane Society of South Flat Valley is located over there. So we do have some, and it is 100% in, in Littleton, and we've had some interest for a long time in that, but we've had challenges because of the ownership. So I'm just, you know, if 20 years down the road, it becomes an opportunity, because it's just a, you know, now all of a sudden, it's, something can be done better somewhere else, um, to ensure that the city has the first right to purchase that, is there, is that?
Yeah, that, Council, yes, I think that would certainly be something we'll keep in the back, I know, I'll keep in the back of my mind in our discussions with South Metro. Uh, I think right now, we're trying to sort of sort through, uh, do we like South Metro deal with it, do we deal with it, do we both deal with it, and, uh, but that certainly is something, uh, to, to address in these discussions.
With transfer of asset, or of, of property and assets, is there any financial benefit to the citizens of, are we just giving all of our apparatus and property to South Metro and basically not getting anything for that?
Well, I would suggest that, uh, the answer is, we are giving the property to South Metro. Who paid for that property, our citizens, our citizens have paid for it once. So I would submit, uh, while legally, we could negotiate something in the agreement, I think there's a fundamental fairness problem asking the citizens to pay twice.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if the citizens would be paying twice, let's say, in a Parker's instance, they pay for it, and it, it's kind of like moving to a neighborhood and saying, I bought a basketball, we'll put it here, anyone can use it.
Uh, the partners are, they. The partners are, they, we are to be quite as part of the ending of the partnership agreement to return a piece of this property that belongs to each partner to the partners. So the partners will be responsible for conveying their property to South Metro. So that leaves a property that's just in the city of Littleton stations. And I think the fundamental problem is, is that this property is still going to be used for the same purpose on January 1 as it is used today. Metro's going to take it itself. They're going to be running those same fire trucks on January 1 that we ran on December 31st. They're going to be providing those same services using that equipment. So the alternative would be if you said, oh, well, we're going to sell it or whatever, then you suddenly increase the cost of this whole deal. And those costs that South Metro incurs, who are they shifted onto? They're shifted on to Littleton citizens.
Right, so they could come back and say, we need to increase the mill levy to 14 because we have.
Need to go to the voters and do something so those costs could shift to Littleton citizens.
If Station 19 paid off?
Is what?
Station 19's.
There is still a loan for the impact fees, but we anticipate it to be fully paid off by the end of 2018. Yes.
But will be paid off by.
Yes.
Just to address your question on the apparatus, I think it's a fair question, and I think Steve really hit the point, is that the apparatus and the stations were purchased with taxpayer dollars to provide a service that it will continue to provide. Looking at it from a flip side, we're gaining access to billions of dollars worth of resources that we did not pay for. If we had a large-scale incident in our jurisdiction, fire apparatus purchased by Parker, Greenwood Village, Cherry Hills Village, DTC would come to our aid and be part of our response at no additional cost to us. When you think about increasing the cost of fire services, we're paying a little bit of money, we're buying all those resources. So it's really a matter of perspective in how you look at that. You know, their philosophy, which I don't necessarily disagree with, is that it's still in our community providing the service it was intended to.
Fair. I noticed in the draft that if we find that inclusion doesn't work out, that we do not get, that the assets stay with South Metro.
Councilmember Fay, that, in this draft, that's correct. Now, I would tell you that is one of the items under discussion. There's no going back because there's no provision in the law for an entity to leave unless they have a popular vote. So what should be understood is inclusion is final, over, done. The point about the authority is, is say, and this is where South Metro's where I have been going back and forth, the authority, what would happen if South Metro in five years, different board or whatever, says, oh, we're tired of doing this authority thing. Littleton can never seem to get the voters to approve an election. Let's just terminate the authority and be done. Now there, the intent is going to be that we will have a return of station 11, 12, and 19. And that equipment that was originally sent with those stations, to the extent it still exists, we would lease that equipment to South Metro, and that would come back. Now, keep in mind, like most vehicles and things, it's a useful life, and what South Metro's going to be doing is, they're not going to be coming to us and asking for money. Truck A works, wears out, that B leased to them, they're going to replace it on their own dollar. We don't get any of that. We just get the pieces that are leased until, and realistically, I want to make it very clear, I think, even with an authority, the realistic fact, I should say, South Metro tires of us and says, we've just had enough. The reality is, it's not likely, for all of the reasons that Chief Armstrong alluded to at the beginning, that we will be doing a standalone fire department. It's simply, we, honestly, we don't have the financial wherewithal and the financial structure in a city of this size to do those expenses. That's why not, you don't see this consolidation here. Recently, at the same time, we're doing this, if you're familiar with Michigan, Macomb County, Michigan, which is just north of Detroit, a county of about 1.2 million people, all of the suburbs in the southern end of Macomb County are doing literally the same type of inclusion agreement that we're doing. Why? Because they're all 50, 60,000 people suburbs, they can't make the numbers work. So I think realistically, it's important to know, even if for some reason we never got behind the authority stage, we're going to preserve all of the city's options in the agreement. That's important. But I wouldn't want the council to think, or the citizens, that realistically, if the authority fell apart, we're going to come back and do our own fire service. I think from a legal standpoint, that's highly unlikely. I think certainly the city manager could address it from that point as well, but it's highly unlikely that we would ever be doing our own fire service again.
So you lost me, I'm sorry. So if we're, if we're.
Inclusion.
Getting included.
Yes.
What in that agreement says that we can be divorced?
No, he was saying.
If we are included, we can't be divorced unless the voters approve leaving. Essentially, once you're in, you're in. And realistically.
So we could decide to vote to withdraw, but they can't just say, go away.
There's a statutory process you'd have to go through to have an election to withdraw from the district.
Okay.
Realistically, there's a statutory process.
It's okay. The way you phrased it, I thought we might slide down the road.
I think he was saying with the authority model, if inclusion doesn't.
The authority model is where we want to preserve that eventuality. Do I think it's going to happen?
No.
I have to tell you, when a person wants to describe lawyers, lawyers always think of the worst-case scenarios. What happens if a building blows up? Does a building blow up very often? No. Do lawyers think about it? Yes. I was actually talking to some friends about prenuptial commitment, and I said, you got to think about getting divorced.
Well, we haven't even gotten married.
And that's how lawyers think, so we have to think about those things.
If it is, if we do the inclusion and you say that we would have to vote to get out, it's not, it's, the vote would have, the entire district would have to vote.
Yes, district.
It's no longer just the city of Littleton.
It's not just us.
It's the whole district. So the map that chief showed, all the green with the little red, that is the district. It's those voters.
And that is the entire district. And the other part of this is, is realistically, once you are in a special district and you want to leave that special district, suddenly, it isn't like the city can come back at that point and get its 6.6, 6.662 mills back. We've gone in, our mill at the end of the table is now 2.0. Even if for some reason the citizens, anybody just said, oh, this is terrible, we're going to leave, it's not, nothing is going to come back to what it was. What we see today, it's extremely important everyone understand, it's gone on December 31st, 2018. It's completely and totally gone. What the structure of fire service on January 1, 2019 will be is something different than what we're seeing today.
Okay, now I hear that, but if we're doing an agreement, can we say if by some crazy, crazy reason, we would want to separate, we'll get to keep such and such?
Well, not under inclusion because state law governs how inclusion is dealt with, not disagreement.
So this is, this is being eaten up, not a wedding.
And with inclusion, this is a done deal for good. The process of getting out after inclusion, in theory, yes. Does it really happen? I'm not aware of a special district where, like a major purpose special district like fire, I'm only aware of one where there was some division, and it was more of a political division than a financial division. So I think you have to understand, inclusion is a permanent solution. The deal is done. While in theory, in the statute, yes, there's a means, I would say to counsel, the deal is done permanently.
So if I could just add on, just to give a little more clarity, I think if we continue on with Tiffany's financial piece, you'll recognize that if we do the inclusion and it's successful, the taxpayers choose for that $20 per month increase, and then the city will give them a rebate of taxes in the neighborhood of about $10. The alternative is, if the vote fails, the city's going to have to find $1.5 million additional out of the general fund to pay for fire service and two services. I think that's where it changes the conversation, and from a policy decision, you want that inclusion vote to pass because it has.
It's just going to cost us more.
It has negative consequences on other services if that vote fails.
The other thing about inclusion is that it prevents us from finding ourselves in this place that we are now because we wouldn't be here if our partners hadn't put their resignations in on the contract. So on an inclusion, we're not going to get dropped out of the inclusion, I mean, out of the, out of the district. So it adds, it adds a security measure for that. Okay, just keep going.
So there's some one-time expenses that are related to an inclusion. One is, as noted before, employees of the fire department will be transferred to South Metro. Due to our policies and just change in personnel, and when employees leave, they essentially will be required to give them a vacation and comp time buyout. It's estimated at about $477,000 as of now. That's subject to change based on what vacations employees take in comp time and whatnot. I think what's important is that we do anticipate some salary savings due to vacancies in 2018 that we think will certainly be able to cover this additional $477,000. So it's not going to be an additional cost to the city because we are fairly certain that we can absorb that in our current budget for 2018. The one thing that we are working on currently is, we're still trying to work out the details. We have two leases that are related to the fire department currently. We have a platform fire truck that we just entered into last year, I believe. So it's a fairly new lease there, so we're going to work out some details. We probably will have to advance fund that and pay off that lease in order to transfer title to South Metro. And then the other leases related to radios, we did a large radio purchase citywide last year, and fire was a portion of that. Like I said, we're still trying to work out some details on those two leases, but it's anticipated that we would have to advance fund those.
When you pay off leases early, is there an additional fine or something?
On one of the leases, there is. There's a termination fee related to that, and those are some things that we're looking at currently to see if there's a way that we can.
Or potentially change our terms so that we can lease it to South Metro until, I mean, let's not throw away money that we don't have to.
Exactly, yeah.
But still fulfill the intent of use of the property, of course.
Right. I will be contacting them directly, our lenders, to see what options they might be able to offer us to help counter those costs. And the other one that was mentioned is a share in election costs for the inclusion. It's estimated at about $50,000 currently.
And I have a question about that. So the contract says that after three elections, so we lose and we go back, so after three elections, then, it wasn't clear to me, do we reimburse back full for those three, or do we start paying full going forward? So if we went to election four, we would pay for it 100%. South Metro says you're on your own. But is the half for the first three, that's, that does not change if we have to go to a fourth one?
I'm going to defer to Steve on that if you address that one for the election costs.
I mean, I don't, Tiffany, maybe you could, why is, why is it all in Douglas County? Is it because, is South Metro's headquarters?
Let me explain that. First, yes, the answer is we have four subsequent quarters on the city. The reason that all the court proceedings on Douglas County is, that is where the district is located. The district's administrative headquarters are located, and that's where the district was formed. So the proceedings, even though we, our election's on three counties, and if you're an Alapahoe voter, your mail ballot is not going to say Douglas County, it's going to say Alapahoe County. If you're a Jefferson County voter, it's going to say Jeff, Jefferson County. But the district itself is in Douglas County District, is in Douglas County District Court that will have jurisdiction.
I think there's one thing that I should probably just note on the vacation comp time buyout. The $477,000 is for all of the employees to go to South Metro. If we were not going to do that, and we're going to do a standalone, we would still have some vacation and comp time buyouts that we would have to pay as well because we would be reducing our workforce if we were just doing a standalone. So I think it's important to understand that we were going to have some of those costs anyway. Partners decided to terminate the contract.
There may have been implications on the lease on the platform as well since it's a three-way purchase. If the ranch and the district are successful in their election, we'd have to figure out who would retain ownership of that truck, meaning we may have to pay them their share for it versus transfer out. So it gets a little convoluted where there's shared responsibilities with multiple people moving in the same direction at different times with different agreements. So a lot of these things, similar was the administrative costs that Tiffany talked about, that we were going to, we were going to lose that regardless of what we do, be in a standalone or South Metro, the service contracts for Lockheed Martin and Meadowbrook, we would not be able to provide that service if we were a standalone. We would lose that revenue regardless of the decision made about how we would provide services in the future.
Personnel, vacation, comp time buyout, is that solely the city of Littleton responsibility, or would that be a three-way split?
What we've done is, we have several vacancies in our organization currently that we have decided to not fill at this time. Reason being is by the time we advertise, hire, and train those individuals and incur that cost, we would be at the end of the year, and they would transfer to South Metro employees. What we've decided to do is retain those vacancy savings, and we have agreements with our partners that we would use our current budget to offset those costs, and they would not expect reimbursement of their share of those salaries. So all three partners are sharing in the cost of that, and because it'll fall well within our budget, we're not anticipating a need for extra revenues to pay for it.
Okay. All right, so there's some other considerations that council will need to address related to the inclusion. The one that I'd like to talk about first is the citywide administrative support provided for the fire department. This is the admin fee. It's related to the administrative fee that the partners pay us. The city provides all the HR functions, finance functions, payroll, street maintenance, all those functions are provided by the city of Littleton. Thus, the reason they pay is an admin fee. I think one thing that we need to discuss eventually is, how are we going to address the admin fee? It's just not feasible and it's impractical to reduce a .2 FTE from finance, a .1 FTE of the attorney's time, a .4 of the HR department. So I think what this is going to allow us to do is, it's going to allow us to evaluate and have the opportunity to reduce costs related to the support. So we've already kind of vetted that. There's some hard costs that we're going to absolutely save if we don't have the fire department, and we've identified a majority of those. The remaining is in soft costs, essentially, personnel. And so I think what this is going to allow us to do, and it kind of comes in line with a priority-based budgeting, it's going to give us the opportunity to look at our programs that we're currently providing. And are we going to be able to reallocate staff resources currently to programs that we want to enhance or to new programs that we may want to look at adding to the city? So I think it's an opportunity for us to look within, to determine, do we, do we have that need elsewhere in our individual departments? And in the meantime, we're also going to be looking at what additional hard dollar savings can we have for the city.
I'm really into this. That will come at budget time.
Exactly.
It's going to take a year to sort it out.
I know, and that's the thing. We, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars is not coming in, and it's all soft costs essentially. I really, I'm really going to be watchful on how, we do not need that to just disappear because there is, you know, there's obviously work that is not going to need to be done. There's obviously time that is not going to need to be spent. obviously time that is not gonna need to be spent. And so what happens to that? Because we're not, you know, we've got departments that are stretched in there, you know, we had, we would try to provide support for that, but this is a whole, this is a different, this is a different spin on that. And I know it's all part of it, and I'm not gonna hold anything up for it, but I mean, that's really gonna be something we're gonna need to really put attention to on the budget, because that's gonna need to, that's gonna need to look really good. Carol?
Do we know what cost Littleton pays to South Metro if it does not go for inclusion?
Yes. So there's a couple of things. So South Metro would require us to pay the 9.25 mil equivalent, which is about $8 million in 2019, that's what we're estimating. In addition to that, South Metro's requiring us to pay them our specific ownership taxes that we collect. So it's the 8 million plus whatever specific ownership tax that we're collecting. Currently, I think it's about $384,000 in the 2018 budget. It'll change, it'll likely go up as property tax revenues go up, they kind of go in line with each other. Because the specific ownership tax.
Yeah. Because if the citizens were paying the 9.25, or the property owners were paying the 9.25, they wouldn't get the ownership tax?
They would, because it's a factor of whatever their total assessed value is for their district. So if they add another 9.25 mils for Littleton Highlands Ranch and the fire district, they get a higher proportion of the total specific ownership taxes for the state. So by us not being included, they essentially are not getting that specific ownership tax addition, and so they have required us to pay them an equivalent.
Mayor, can I just comment back on to what you were noting here, the administrative fee and what Tiffany was referencing here? Absolutely during the budget process here this summer and fall, we're gonna be discussing this administrative fee. And as Tiffany kind of pointed out, the priority-based budgeting is an opportunity to kind of look at it differently. It's a lot more difficult in a line item budget for the council to understand where that administrative fee is at. And so this is a way for you to decide those priorities, those programs, those services, where you want the emphasis. And so if we can shift those resources, I think that's probably a good start to that conversation through that process.
And I think a good example is payroll. You know, we do payroll for 550 employees citywide. If we're not gonna have 190 employees, we're still gonna have to process payroll. So again, it doesn't make sense to have to reduce an FTE by .3 or .4 just because they're working on fire today. There are definitely other areas of finance in particular that that person could certainly help or expand the payroll function, or look at other things in the finance department.
Yeah, see, that's where I think it gets really fuzzy. Because if they're, if it's that big, if they're that overburdened now, then how come we're not getting a half-timer or a partner, somebody in there to support? Now all of a sudden, there's the money, so now all of a sudden, there's the spread. And that's where I just, I mean, this isn't about not trusting you guys to do the right thing. This is about that we are asking the citizens for, you know, a big ask, and I think that we just need to be really, because this is exactly the place where government screws up every single time when it's trying to build the trust of its community. And I know we don't wanna do that. So that's why I'm just saying, I think that if, quite honestly, if there's a way to show that we are actually saving, I don't want someone to lose their job. But there is a likelihood that that could happen. We just lost 150 employees and spent 20-some-odd million, how many million dollars out of our budget? You know, that, so that's seismic. We've always said, fire's the biggest department, fire's the biggest expense. Now it's not there, and so, and also to the point, our partners, you know, we, admin fee, we need that fee, this is what we do with it, and now we don't have it, and all of a sudden, so, you guys get it, it's just.
And that's why we're pointing it out. I think it is a significant issue for us. It's just gonna have to play out in a little bit of a different timeline.
So the one thing also that is kind of a result of an inclusion is our general fund fund balance reserve. So currently, our fund balance reserve requirement is, the policy is 8% to 18% of our operating costs in the general fund. We have currently done 17%, that was council's direction over the previous nine to 10 years. So it's 17%. If we no longer have fire operating costs in our general fund budget and our EMS fund budget, essentially, we have the opportunity to reduce our reserve. So 17% on our current budget is about $11 million. If we eliminate about $22 million out of our general fund, that can be reduced to 7 million.
But it's still 17%.
But it is still 17%, which is what the policy is. So I think it's important to know that that is a decision point that council's gonna have at some point. Is there a change that you wanna make as a council to the 17%? Do you wanna keep the additional 4 million? But that's something that's gonna be discussed in the future, probably during budget sessions. I think too, you know, we'll come as council in April with some five-year projections in the general fund and the capital projects fund, and I think you're really gonna see it at that point, and that impact is to the general fund.
So hold a second. So if we're, I mean, if we're doing the budget for next year, I think at the very least, we need a policy now, a position now, that, like, finance can bring us a budget that, maybe two budgets, one if this is approved, and one if it isn't, and in both cases, whatever 17% we're considering. So it's built in, and I know that will take more time, but it makes more sense to go ahead and do that, it seems to me.
I'm okay with bringing one budget, because if you bring in another budget that says, yeah, we're gonna spend that money, we're gonna do a total budget.
But if the voters don't vote for the inclusion, then we have to come up with $8 million. We've approved a budget in October that looks like an inclusion budget, and the voters don't vote for it in November, we do have a problem.
That's addressed in the next ordinance. And it envisions that the city manager will actually bring you an alternative if inclusion's not approved. So there's going to be sort of an A and a B.
So at the same time we see the budget, it will be after the vote?
I expect what we'll have to do is, we'll adopt one budget, but it will be conditionally adopted, in the event that happens, certain things don't happen, then we switch over to the other budget.
And if it does happen, doesn't mean we get to go spend. That's my point, it's just because there's money there, it doesn't mean it's money to go spend. That was my point.
There'll be some conditional net. But we've actually created in the next presentation, so the structure for how that's gonna get done.
Well, yeah, that has to be.
All right, let's keep going on this.
We got two more slides, get her down.
We're almost there. So one of the other things that will happen with an inclusion is if we're no longer providing EMS services, we have a Tabor enterprise currently that houses our EMS services. There's gonna be a one-time transfer of that net position to the general fund. It essentially is accounts receivable, ambulance runs that we've already accounted for the revenue, and we're just collecting the cash side of it. So that's gonna be a one-time transfer. I estimated, and my number's about $725,000. I think that's gonna change definitely by the end of 2018, depending on what our AR ends up being at the end.
We're not transferring what's already been billed, though.
We're transferring the AR portion, the balance sheet portion of accounts receivable.
Why?
Because we're still gonna collect it. We've already provided the service, we've already paid for the service, so we still just need to collect it from insurance companies.
Right, but we're not transferring it to South Metro?
No, 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 no.
I thought you were saying we're transferring it.
To the general fund. Yeah, that's an internal fund, no.
Good, thanks.
So this is kind of an interesting or scary-looking slide. There's a lot of large numbers in here, but I wanted to kind of give you a full picture of what inclusion might look like if everything culminated in one year or at one point in time. So I don't want you to be alarmed if we do present a budget to council and you see a reduction of $22 million in revenues, and you see a reduction of $24 million in expenses. But essentially, what this does is, this captures everything that we've kind of talked about tonight. The reduction in the $4 million property taxes, the reduction in the fire costs. The reason it's so high is because, again, we provide the service for our partners as well, so it's not only our costs, our 7.1, it's their costs as well.
That's exactly what I was going to ask. So how does the 7 relate to this?
So the 7 is kind of embedded throughout. It is. It's embedded through various areas of the total picture. But I think what I wanna focus on is the total. I know it shows a negative $1.2 million, but there's two things that that primarily makes up. One of them is the capital, the advanced funding of the capital leases. So if we have to pay those off in order to transfer those assets to South Metro, it's about $600,000 that we're gonna have to fund from the city's perspective. And then the other portion of the $1.2 million is related to the administrative cost. We know we're not gonna get those revenues any longer from the partners. So between those two things, that's essentially what the $1.2 million negative or change is for the city.
So when I look at this, we're essentially saying, our revenues are gonna go down by 26 million, but our expenses are only going to go down by 24 million. Said another way, our expenses are going up, we're not going down at the same, so we're expenses than the revenue that.
Right.
Okay.
That's the 1.2 million, and that's essentially paying off the capital leases?
So this is a one-time?
It is.
If we were to, so if we were to take out the one-time cost and just look at it on a go-forward basis, what would that look like?
The difference would essentially be the admin fee.
Which is?
About $700,000, $800,000.
So we're still spending more than we were before.
Which is gonna allow us the opportunity to look at our programs within the City of Littleton and reallocate maybe some of those sources.
If I could, this chart is also affected by the departure of our fire partners. So when we look at fire-related revenues, it goes down when our partners leave. When we look at EMS revenues, if we're not transporting patients in Highlands Ranch and the district, those revenues go down. If we look at fire-related costs, those numbers go down if we're not providing service to two-thirds of our jurisdiction. So these numbers, what you're not seeing here is, what is the impact if we stayed alone, and those numbers change regardless of what we do? So it's important to keep in mind that there are large and widespread effects of the termination of our fire partnership that impact various levels of the organization regardless of the decisions made on what to do moving forward.
And the other thing here is, part of that expense is actually streets and infrastructure.
It is.
I know you've chosen to put that in there, but it, you know, my concern here is, it is showing that there is a higher expense, but we're also, there's a higher expense because we're choosing to allocate money to the capital. So I think we just have to be careful about that messaging.
If I may, just, I wanna emphasize the point that Tiffany made earlier, that what you're seeing is the first-year projected cost of this inclusion. When we come back in April, we're gonna be updating the financial plans for both the general fund, the five-year financial plans for the general fund and the capital project fund, to start to start capturing some of this, these costs. So you do get to see a longer-term impact of this decision.
So is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get stuck on these numbers a little bit. So if we were to take out the 3 million, the message here would actually be that we would be saving money if we were, if we do this inclusion.
On just fire. Just fire. Just fire.
Take fire.
And then we're gaining improvements on our streets.
Right. So it's twofold. So there is, so is it an accurate statement to say, with inclusion into South Metro Fire, we would be saving money? Put aside the capital, the 3 million. We don't put that into this equation right now. We would be saving money.
That's a true statement.
That is.
The government is good at spending its savings. So we've already spent the savings.
So I'm not understanding why the streets and infrastructure's in there, which is sort of what you're saying. The rest of it is all related to the same thing, and suddenly, there are boogeymen in there somewhere. Is that kind of?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just important that we really can be able to, you know, as I look at it, I'm saying, wow, we're saving money, we're getting better service, fantastic. Yep, why wouldn't I do this? Now, I also understand that, you know, the money now is coming from property taxes versus sales tax, so it is shifting pockets a little bit. But overall, we are, this is a good thing. We're getting better service, we are actually saving money, not only in the short term, but even in the long term, that isn't even accounted for here. So that message is a really strong, great message.
Plus, we're getting, we're able to address our streets and infrastructure issues that we've had.
But it seems like.
But we have to stop, my statement stops there. And then, we can have a conversation, in a bigger budget conversation, to say, we now recognize we have funds available to us to invest in where we deem necessary.
If we're gonna have it on the negative side, we should also have it on the positive side, to wash each other out.
Technically, your savings is the $3.1 million. The disposal is that you use it for your needs on road improvement.
Right, well, the 3.1 is from the 2 mil, right?
It's the difference.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, if we're gonna show it under the expense, we should also show it under the revenue.
It's a difference between, it's a difference between your fire service costs and the reduction in property tax.
Yeah, that's the difference.
I understand it, I understand, but to me, it should be in revenue also.
Well, technically, you're right, it technically is revenue.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
So is this the last slide?
It is.
Yeah.
So we do have a companion discussion here.
I have some questions.
Sure, no problem.
That I found to the end. I think I saw in the ordinance somewhere that the reduction in the property tax revenue goes into effect for 2020. Can you explain that? Did I read that correctly? Collections for 2020?
The agreement will be effective the beginning of January 2019, but the property tax levy, it's, we connect property tax for a budget year, but the property tax levy doesn't actually happen on January 1. It happens on a different cycle. So it's recognizing, the agreement goes into effect January 1. And I think probably you're a little familiar than I am right now with the property tax levy structure, Tiffany, but basically, it's not levied. You don't get a tax bill in January, what, you get a year.
It's a year later.
So maybe I should ask this a different way.
Does the 9.25 go in at the same time that the 4 goes down?
Yes.
And then, you talked a lot about accreditation, all the things that it takes to become accredited. Can you talk about the value of it? Because the ISO rating can still exist without accreditation, so can you maybe share with us some of the value add that you truly do get from accreditation, that a community gets?
You know, I probably would ask Mike if I could put him on the spot. He really probably could speak more to the value, being an accredited agency and going through the process, and I would probably do it to service. Mike, would you wanna take a stab at that?
You got five minutes, Mike. Five minutes.
Have a seat up here, please. It wasn't expected, Mike, I'm gonna owe a lunch tomorrow.
Thanks for the opportunity, by the way, inviting us. So accreditation has become a little bit more useful in recent years, but overall, accreditation, I couch as more of a method of running your business. So like any good business, or billion-dollar business out there, we would expect them to be looking into the future, strategically planning, looking at all their risks facing their industry, developing goals and objectives and measurables to indicate whether or not they're successful as a business, and then having some sort of outcome to the whole thing. And really scrutinizing all the different aspects of their organization. That's kind of what accreditation is. So it's meant to make you constantly improve. So it's meant to make you constantly improve and to constantly be striving for excellence using that more business framework. So the benefits of that, then, is that you have a better-run organization. Hopefully, you found efficiencies because you're actually looking for them. You're not just replicating a budget over and over again. You're not just adding to every year. You're always looking at ways to save, be more efficient, provide better service, all that kind of stuff. When it comes to ISO and accreditation, they're actually a little bit more related now. So ISO provides points for accreditation, or allows you to use the things that you had approved for accreditation on how you distribute your resources. ISO now recognizes that. So it's more of the evolution of ISO from days gone by where it was more of a checklist of equipment that you may not ever use, but we want to see you have it on all your apparatus, and a very prescriptive method of placing your fire stations and how far are they from every point on every road, or from a fire hydrant. And now they're evolving more into the GPS, GIS worlds, and distribution and travel times and stuff like that. So those worlds are crossing more, which would help account for the fact that we're an ISO 1. So that's a little bit more of a tangible benefit of accreditation.
So then that translates, though, to homeowners and businesses getting more favorable insurance because these resources are there and good.
Correct.
And it also translates into, as I heard you, it helps us to mitigate the risk of an increase in a mill levy in the future. Because it's very accountable to running an efficient organization.
Right. If we ever need to go for a mill levy, we should really be able to spell out why, what have we done up to this point, or what's our future hold for us, and what are we going to do with that money?
Carol, did you have a question? Yes, I, from what I read in the draft, it isn't possible to measure what the improvement is going to be. And yet you're describing a process that's pretty exact, it seems. With an exact process like you're describing, why isn't it possible to measure what the improvement is?
So I think the reason why the contract says that right now, and it was similar discussion that we had with Littleton Fire Protection District, because the city and the district share so many resources and boundaries that we need to know all the picture of who's in and who's out before we can really talk about where should future resources and stations go. So there might be stations that benefit both the Station 13, far western areas of the district, as well as the city itself. And until we know what that looks like, we'll kind of put that on hold. That's why it says that. We have performance standards. We'll have to identify the areas where we're not meeting our response time goals and come up with improvement plans. But as a break this second, we can't say what those are.
And so an example to answer your question, Councilman, when the last jurisdiction I was in, we had an accredited fire department. We annexed a 40-square-mile plaza. And we had to go through sort of a separate study because when you annex that big of territory, you had to begin to analyze, well, maybe our current stations don't work at all. And we were part of a regional automatic aid system. And so we then had to analyze other jurisdiction stations and put all that. And it took us a couple of years to work through that plan. So then we had sort of a thoughtful capital improvement plan for when we were going to build stations and where we were going to build them based on all of that analysis. And that's literally what this agreement visions here is exactly that same type of process.
Other questions? Anyone? We ready to go to the next one?
Yes.
Go to the next one. We'll hear the next one, and then we'll give staff direction. Does anybody need a break? Five-minute break? Okay, let's do 8:30.
It's a 10-minute break.
Oh, it's a 10-minute.
And this is a discussion pertaining to the Capital Projects Reserve Account. There are a number of options that staff has shown us, things really are interrelated. So, let's go ahead. Tiffany, you want to go ahead and get started?
Sure. So, as we discussed earlier, one of the opportunities that we have with an inclusion is to dedicate approximately $3.1 million each year, and I'll talk about an inflation factor of that, to address some of our maintenance issues with streets and infrastructure. So, a little bit of background is on February 3rd, we talked with council at the City Council Retreat or Workshop, related to the long-term financial sustainability of the city. There were two major topics that we talked about. We talked about capital costs, because we know we definitely have some concerns on how we're going to fund improvements to our streets and to our fleet division, to buildings within the city, police equipment, and things of that nature. And then the other topic we talked about was fire and EMS service costs. So, with an inclusion of what we're proposing is to dedicate the $3.1 million for funding of streets and infrastructure. I think it's important that, you know, we've already discussed that we know we have inadequate funding for capital. You've seen the 20-year projections where we've got almost $100 million of capital needs within the city. What this will do is this will allow us to address a portion of that, and really a small portion of our overall needs of the city as a whole. This is going to address some of our maintenance needs for streets and infrastructure. Kind of talked about this earlier. This is how we get to the $3.1 million. The city's currently spending about $7.1 on fire. We want to reduce the property taxes by $4 million, which nets us about a $3.1 million difference, and that's what we would like to dedicate to the streets and infrastructure.
Quick question with that number?
Yeah.
So, we're, so we had 6.62 mils. If we go down, you know, 4.6, so keeping 2, so basically we're keeping less than a third?
Yeah, it's about 1.7.
Okay. Just the 4 and 3 are a third and 2/3s, really?
They're not.
Okay.
No, no, you can't.
Okay.
No. Good.
Do you want to make sure?
Don't do that math.
But I think that's an important point. 2 mils does not equal the 3 million.
It does not. Right. That's absolutely true. It does not equal the 2.0 mils. That's about 1.7. So, the $3.1 million, what this is going to be used for? The way that the ordinance has been drafted is there's a number of things that we would like to use the $3.1 million for, and specifically dedicated to roads and infrastructure. This will help with some maintenance issues, some overlay issues. I think the one thing that's important is it does not include anything related to rightaways or curb gutter in streets, or curb gutter in sidewalk. It does not. This is only going to allow us to maintain the roads, so that we can mitigate any future expenses related to reconstruction of roads as a whole. So, this will help us maintain our roads to the level that we need currently. I think what you'll see on this slide is that Mark alluded to the 2014 report where it says we need to, it recommends a $4 million budget just for maintaining our roads currently, and that's related to the CPI-PCI index.
Inequality Index. Remember, that 4 million was just asphalt and concrete pavement, not curb gutter sidewalk or traffic signal system, just pavement.
We mentioned the 1.4 million that we currently get from HUTF for the gas tax. That's what we are projected for the next 20 years. The only amount that we're able to dedicate to streets currently, because we have other capital needs within the city.
Jerry?
Mark, the gutters are important to our streets.
Yes.
So, how do we pull that off?
Yeah, and I think, I think the context of this is the study was just talking about the pavement. What we're suggesting in the draft ordinance is to broaden that level of investment, the dedication to deal with the pavement, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, and the traffic signal systems. And let me give you a specific instance. It's also drafted, so you can expand that to cover some capacity improvements as well. So, if you had an intersection where you knew that the condition of it, a maintenance requirement is, we had to go in there and reconstruct that thing. At the same time, you're going to obviously want to look at and make sure that you are dealing with the future capacity. So, you may decide you need a right turn pocket or a left turn pocket. That's capacity. So, obviously, you want to rebuild it just once, so you want to do the capacity, the turn pockets, and all the maintenance all at the same time. So, that's how the draft ordinance is written. It's a broad, a little broader use of the infrastructure in the public right-of-way, curb gutter sidewalk pavement, traffic signal system.
Can you point out where in the ordinance it gives us that language?
Yes. If you were to look at the draft of the ordinance, and you look at on page 2, it would be permitted expenditures from the Capital Projects Reserve Account. And then it references 1 through 7. Number 1 is design, engineering, acquisition of right-of-way by purchase or condemnation, construction and reconstruction of multi-modal transportation projects, including but not limited to municipal bridges, streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage inlets and drainage structures, and driveway entrances. And you may think, well, why did we put a driveway entrance in? Well, when you have a resurfacing a road, if you have a driveway entrance where the driveway entrance is too low or whatever, and results in ponding, it destroys your pavement. So, if you're really doing what we would call a complete road project, engineers can address this a lot better than me, you actually go in and replace a dilapidated driveway entrance, so that you don't have the ponding and destroy the pavement. So, this is broad enough to give you that ability, and it's also broad enough to allow you to do it either by yourself, or you could do it with another intergovernmental, with another political subdivision through an intergovernmental agreement. Because frequently, we'll have a road like Broadway, but we wouldn't do the road in isolation. We would do an intergovernmental agreement, most likely with the Rappahoe County and Centennial, to do the complete roadway at once. And so, if we did a resurfacing, we, you just wouldn't do it in isolation and go down the road and look for the boundary line.
We have done that on Broadway with Centennial. They took the left side, we took the right.
I might also point out in that same section there, the second paragraph, we're talking specifically about traffic signal systems. So, the design, acquisition, rehab, and upgrades. So, you know, typically, you know, a signal system, we, that's another piece of our infrastructure that we just really have not had, been able to get to long-term. We've talked over here the last few years about some specific examples. So, this is set up so that we can look at the signal system and making sure that we have the appropriate number of heads, the span is correct, we align with the lanes, if you remember some recent conversations. So, that, that language is drafted, so we can accommodate those kinds of improvements.
So, keeping our commitment, it's really important that if we are able to dedicate the $3.1 million, that we are making sure and that citizens are understanding that we are going to spend it on what we say we're going to spend it on. So, the way we want to do this is we would like to propose a Capital Projects Reserve Account that would automatically go into effect if the voters approve the inclusion in the South Metro. And what that might look like is currently we have the Capital Projects Fund, and you've seen the line item budgets. What we would do is we would create a separate department in the Capital Projects Fund that's specifically for the $3.1 million that we are going to dedicate. And we would actually present to council each year a five-year plan, and so council would review the projects that we want to include and use in, for that $3.1 million. So, it'd be completely separate, although it's within the Capital Projects Fund. We would have a separate five-year plan for that. The other thing that will allow us to do is at the end of every year, let's say we have $3.1 million and we're only able to spend $2 million, so there would be 1.1 million left in that, that reserve account. We would actually show that on our financial statements, so at the end of the year, everyone would know exactly how much was remaining in that, and then you could use that, council could again decide if they wanted to appropriate that for additional projects in the following year.
If I may, Keith Reister, our Public Works Director, would tell you right away that he would never leave one mill. If you allocate that for a project, he'll spend it.
Although, although, but I know how he would answer. We just talked about $400,000 that we were not even going to spend.
That's correct.
Yes.
The, um, this is not, if this all goes into the capital budget fund, it is not subject to Tabor, meaning if we don't spend the money, it stays in the fund.
Right.
Carol, did you have a question?
So, with the 3.1, well, that would be almost a very conservative estimate, but the same, if you said our 7.1 spent on fire was a low estimate, that in theory, we could be, you know, 7.5, 7.8 million is what we intend to spend.
Right.
So, are we looking to send just the 3.1, so those, that, let's say, extra half a million dollars that, you know, would that, would that stay in the general fund then?
It would, yes. Yes.
Unless we designated it during budget, that would go on to that money. So, we've done that in the past, that there's been a need, and we've, staff has maybe made a recommendation, and we moved it.
Exactly. Yeah, so once we final the audit, and we know where we ended, for example, 2017, when we're going through the 2019 budget, we'll present to council where we ended, and there's an opportunity for council to address any excess, if you will, or if they wanted to dedicate additional funding to streets and infrastructure or capital of some nature.
You brought up Tabor. Is any of this affecting Tabor?
Positively.
Yeah.
Yes, there, there is an impact for Tabor, and you're right, it is positive. So, currently, our Tabor limit includes the revenues from the fire partners. We get $13 million a year from the fire partners for their share, and that's included in our Tabor cap. If we're no longer receiving that $13 million, we've essentially lowered our, I don't know the best way to explain it, we've given ourselves some excess capacity until we actually would hit our Tabor cap.
But when does it start ratcheting down, though?
It would be immediate, the first year that you don't collect the revenues. So, 2019.
Right.
What gets ratcheted down?
Our Tabor cap.
Yeah. The cap will stay where it is currently today. The cap doesn't go down, it's just our revenues will not be up there any longer.
So, so then we, we lose that ability to spend some of that?
Uh-oh. Now we have it.
It won't keep the cap.
It loses the ability.
But at first, but if we don't take action, we lose it. I mean, we lose it eventually. Because that, the cap just to stay up here, it doesn't.
It does. The cap does stay.
The cap stays up here. What happens is, now, for example, the property tax, once we reduce that to 2 mils, that will establish a new limit on the property tax, and we would have to go to the voters to increase that 2 mils on the property tax and the table. When you think of Tabor, table, you essentially set an expenditure limit, and you set a tax limit. What the expenditure limit does is it says you can't expand any more than your limit. What we were running into in the past was, we were hitting our limit, and we were having excess, and the excess you have to either give back or ask the voters for permission to use. Now, what's going to happen, because we don't have the revenues, instead of our revenues and our limit being like this, our limit stays here, but our revenues are going to be down here, and it's going to take a few years for the revenues to climb back up.
It'll take a few decades.
I don't know if I'm optimistic to Tiffany. I think maybe more like a decade, but realistically, it's going to take a while for that to happen. So, this does actually give us a positive impact.
That stays, that's what I was concerned, is that it would go down?
It gives it a positive, because the expenditure limit doesn't drop, and, but the tax side does.
If I may, it does, I want to make sure this is crystal clear, so that if the council does act to reduce the property tax, you have the ability to do that under Tabor, but you only can raise it through a vote of the people. So, if we go down to 2, it's permanent until the voters raise it. So, make sure that's crystal clear.
But that's also part of what we hope will encourage folks to vote for Tabor.
I would agree. I think that's the political or the big policy issue for you, is to signify to our citizens that you are making this a permanent reduction in order to offset some of that cost. That's why these are tied together.
Short and sweet.
You talked about some rationale of how you're getting to the 3 million, and the reason I want to hear about that, because one of the things that this, this does is, if we say it's always going to be a 3 million, you almost have to look at, in our general fund, we're going to have a line item that every year, regardless of where our revenues are or where other expenses may come, this is, I believe, I'm hearing that this is a fixed line item. So, when we talk about, let's say, we make a decision to hold our reserves at 17%, and we have a bad year, and we can't be at 17%, this 3 million stays, we're going to have to cut other things to stay at 17%. So, that's how I'm understanding this. Is that correct, and can you talk a little bit more of why 3 million?
Okay. Well, the $3 million is the difference between what we're paying for fire today and the reduction in the property taxes. That's where the $3.1 million comes in. What the ordinance that you have before you is proposing is that that actually will increase annually. And what we've currently tied it to, and we have some options, this is purely an internal decision that council can decide on. Currently, the way we have it structured is that we would relate our retail sales tax percentage increase every year to what the $3 million might be adjusted for. So, for example, if our retail sales tax were to go up 5% one year, we would also increase the $3 million by an amount close to that, because we would like to cap it at the CPI index, Consumer Price Index. So, it would be the lesser of the two. So, if CPI was 3% and our retail sales went up 5%, we would increase the 3 million by 3%. Now, let's say the retail sales tax was to be less, let's say it goes down by 5%, we would reduce the 3 million by the 5%.
Okay, so it does, so this is, this is why you said base revenue, and then it fluctuates?
Right. Right.
Indexed against the retail sales questions.
Yes. Now, we have some options, and one thing that we've talked about internally is, you know, sales tax fluctuates pretty drastically, too, in relation to the economy. You know, we've seen years as high as 5%, we've seen it go down 5%. So, one of the things that we discussed that could be an option is that we do kind of a three-year rolling average for retail sales tax. That way, we're not taking, we're kind of mitigating the spikes and the highs and lows of a retail sales tax. Because, you know, right now, retail sales taxes is fairly good. We've seen some positive increases. But, you know, the economy can turn at any time. We've seen it in the past, and from everything that I see, we're kind of overdue for a recession in general. And so, it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's just a matter of when. And so, that's one way that we want to tie it to the economy, because we certainly don't want to hold our hands to a $3 million number and then see a decline in retail sales tax, which is the majority of the revenues for the city. And so, that's why we would like the opportunity to adjust that in relation to retail sales tax with a cap of CPI.
Two things. Is it possible to have, to not use all caps, or is there a requirement for using all caps?
Normally, in legislative drafting, the way that the state normally it's done is that new text is always indicated by all caps. But if the council has a preference, some jurisdictions in the country, we use double underline. So, if you prefer double underline for the future, I'm fine with double underline. But normally, we would always show new text either by double underline or by all caps. And the idea is, that way, it allows you as the policymakers to know right from the get-go, what is new, that same as strikeout, whenever we take anything out of the code, you always see a line through it. And that's just from a legislative drafting standpoint done, so that you, and I know it gets really...
It's really hard to read.
Yeah.
And you said that, back to the South Metro fire, that there would be other drafts. Could you somehow make evident what the changes are?
Yes, I will. In the next draft, what I'll do is, I will indicate, it's going to really be on the transfer of property, and it's going to be on how we address Lockheed, Meadowbrook, and then it's going to be a provision in the agreement that we talk about underground storage tanks. It'll be those.
What I'm asking is that, that I could be 100% confident that the next draft I get is the same as this, except...
It would, it would be.
...what stands out, so I don't have to read it all.
It will be, it will be, and I'll have, what I'll do is on the next draft, because we're getting pretty close, I will normally get to the council draft, I will have some comments on the side, that we're talking a little bit about, why did we do this?
And then also on the South Metro, on, on page 4, it says, for the ballots, a coordinated mail ballot to seek voter approval for the first time, but then for second and going on, it could be a mail ballot or a polling place. And, and I see a significant difference of, of what the outcome could be for that. Can we remove the or polling place and make it mail?
I think the reason that they put that in there was because if we do it in conjunction with the state, it would be a mail ballot election. Conceivably, if we did it off-cycle, the states not, and the counties aren't doing a consolidated election, so conceivably then, it could be a polling place election, and I think they wanted to preserve that option. From the city's standpoint, quite honestly, mail ballot elections across the country have higher turnout. So, I don't have a problem if the council would not be to go back and just say, the South Metro, even though it's your election, we think it should be mail ballot, just because the turnout's high.
Would the reason be that, because if it's a special election off-cycle, it's a lot cheaper to do a polling? That's probably the reason why.
And it's cheaper to do a polling.
It could be one reason. Another reason is that many fewer people would, probably, fewer people would show up, and only those probably with a highly vested interest one way or the other. And so, it becomes less representative of the will of the voters, and it becomes more representative of those who are really charged one way or the other, and I really would prefer not to go to those extremes.
And now, I would tell you, my experience in other places has been that a normal off-cycle election will be turnout somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% to 20%, and a mail ballot election will be between 25% and 30%. That still sort of says something about the percentage of people getting out, but it is, it is a significantly greater turnout.
With the, so with the or, mail or polling place, who would decide that? Would that be South Metro?
We would, what we would want to do is for the first, for the elections, we'd want to incorporate language like we have right now in the election dates, where the two of us would consult together regarding that process. Technically, it's South Metro's election, so it's really hard to say, you should do it this way. But I certainly understand what you're coming from, council member, which is, hey, you're going to get a bigger turnout by mail, and frankly, in my experience on something like this, you really want to make as turnout you can get, so, which is all the more reason why I think it makes sense to have the two parties discuss that, even though there is no question it's a greater cost to do by mail.
I think it's worth it. I think it's a great point.
Do you know how the, how Protection District and Highlands Ranch are doing it in May?
Polling.
Polling?
That's usually how districts do it. South suburban will do it that way. The one district that doesn't do that is the school district, they'll come to the ballot. Urban Drainage Point Control is going to the ballot, so they'll go mailing, because they have to go through the state. But traditionally, like, South suburbanants always just walk to the poll. They do have, I, Highlands Ranch is...
You also got to have your ID.
Yeah, and Highlands Ranch, you can do absentee voting with polling, so people can get, ask for ballot early, and they can vote that way. They don't have to go to the poll that day, but it is one day at the poll. But I would agree, I think that's a great point, Carol.
Are we talking just mail, or come and drop it in a ballot box in the car?
Either or. Carol suggested that if we start with mail, we stick with mail.
It, it would be also, you could drop in the ballot box, a typical mail ballot.
Oh, but not polling. So, that, everyone agrees, we'd like to see that changed?
I will make incorporate that change. I will make incorporate that change in my next draft.
Thank you.
It's good.
You're welcome. I have a question.
As at normal.
We voted on, a number of years ago, on the impact fees. I thought we charged a fee for public safety. And if we did, how does that figure into this? Can we continue to charge that fee? And if so...
If we, if we no longer provide fire service, then we will no longer be able to collect an impact fee related to fire services. Fire and police are split, so there's two separate fees for those two public service items, but we would no longer be able to collect the fire portion, which is correct, because we won't have any fire costs.
That's another reduction in revenue.
It is, but it's specific to capital, and if we don't have any capital purchases or that we have to make for fire, then we won't need the fire impact fees.
We only used that for capital purchases of fire equipment. We didn't use that for anything else?
No.
Okay.
It's strictly related to expansion of services.
That's very important. Expansion of services, not replacement of existing capital. Expansion of services. But it's a good point. I didn't think of that. We're going to have to go back and look at our code here on the impact fee for fire.
Yeah, we, it's in the code. We will need between now and the end of the year to do an amendment to take that out. Tiffany and I have had some discussion about whether we ought to just be studying all of our impact fees.
That's a good question.
Please. We have a lot of other work ahead of us before that.
I know.
We're just...
That's an attorney humor.
I love it, but...
I'm sorry, I got to comment on this, but we do need eventually to come back and update those.
Yes.
Because there is the transportation piece in particular, I'm really concerned about that. It's significantly underestimated.
All right, here we go again. Tiffany, anything else?
I think Karina might.
Karina? Does anybody else have questions before I ask my second question or third for the evening?
No one does. Go ahead.
I see by time you do, yes. You're thinking like, all right, so just speaking up.
We talked about, maybe it was you, Mark, that said, we've done this before. So at some point, we were funding from the general fund to capital to supplement, and I believe that has come to an end. So can you talk about the situation when we have done that before? The reason I'm asking is, it seems like a big jump, and I've heard all the reasons why, but I think it's important to convey that actually, that is what we need to be, and we've kind of fallen off for the past five years or whatever it is. And then the second question that I have is, can we build up a reserve in the capital fund for bigger projects? Does this say we have to use it, or can this be put into a reserve in the capital fund?
So I'll address the first one, as far as the transfers. So yes, historically, probably over the last five to seven years, we've had additional excess funds in the general fund at the end of the year. And so council had made the decision to transfer anything above the 17% reserve to the capital projects fund. Unfortunately, we are not going to be able to do that any longer, and we kind of presented that to council with our five-year and then even our 20-year capital plan. We just don't have the capacity to do that any longer. And so 2017, I believe, is the last year that, the first year that we're not going to have a transfer to the capital projects fund. So this would kind of reenact that using the 3.1 million dollars. So we would get back to where we potentially have been in the past few years, although this will be dedicated specifically for streets and infrastructure. Whereas in the past, we were able to transfer 3 million or 4 million for capital as a whole for the city. Is that kind of addressed?
Part of the big cliff that Mark's been talking about.
Right. I think too, when we come, when we come to council in April, we're going to be showing the five-year plans for capital and the general fund, and you will see that there's still so many unfunded capital needs out there, that we're not even making a dent on where we should be for capital and infrastructure.
To answer your second question, the answer is yes. And I think that's why we're suggesting that the council actually use a five-year plan, where you could decide in the future, what are the projects that you're wanting to fund? I guess I'm just using as an example. One could be something that's still out in the future awaits, but you want to start reserving for that particular project. And I think, you know, there's obviously a lot of needs, as Tiffany's talking about, but as we start to look to Santa Fe as an example, you know, we are going to have to eventually address the, hopefully, the city's share of the potential projects, say of Mineral and Santa Fe. So could this fund be used for that purpose? Yes, it could be. The question will be in the long run, whether or not there's really sufficient funds there to develop what we need for our match, and so we still may have to look at something else on top of that. But the short answer is, yes, you could reserve for specific projects.
In essence, by doing this, we've prioritized, we're making a decision to prioritize our roads in the whole scheme of capital, our roads will always be funded first.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, yes, correct.
Why do you say, so, but this isn't just maintenance. This isn't just for maintenance, right?
It's not just maintenance.
We made it broad enough that it could be?
You could, you could expand that, but yes, the intent was to try to address the maintenance issues here. You could, and it's written so you can, as I, that example I gave you, start to actually tackle some of the capacity improvements. At the same time, I just want to point out that all of the transportation projects that we identified, and Keith Reister talked about this here a while back, several hundred million. So in reality, this is really not sufficient to tackle all of those. There's still going to have to be some conversation about what to do with the balance, but you could actually tag this for capacity improvements.
I think we really need to be careful. I think that we have talked endlessly about the problem with the maintenance, and that if we don't maintain, then we end up with a bigger fix and a bigger fix and a bigger fix. And we've always had that $4 million number, and that's been the number before the fire situation, before anything else, it's been, we need bare minimum $4 million a year.
For maintenance.
For maintenance.
Maintenance.
And everything else above that is above that.
And if we start pulling from it?
Yeah. And that's what I don't want to do. I don't want us to get into a place where we have, we have this, now we have this $4 million, because the gas tax would go in there, and so that would get us to $4 million-plus-ish. That money, based on some of the numbers you've shown us, they can use that every year for the next 10 years, and we will still not complete the maintenance that we need to do. So by thinking we can extract and take a little bit here, or put a street light there with it, or something like that, I think that we're getting into a place where we don't want to go. Those are things that need funding also. We need to talk about additional, we have over $100 million in unfunded projects that we still need to have a conversation about, and there is possible opportunity, huh? Get the pistols out. There's also an opportunity with the state, and, you know, if they go to the ballot, and what would happen there, that then we could also get some additional road money that could help take care of some of those. That's all transportation oriented, that's not capital projects. That doesn't take care of town hall, that doesn't care of the service center, it doesn't take care of this building. If we have another roof problem on this building, we, you know, we are going to be doing that cornerbagger thing.
Parks.
Yeah. So I think that, I would like to just throw out there that I think that this needs to be incredibly clear, that this is specifically for that purpose. If we want to put something in there that at 10 years, we reevaluate, because in 10 years, maybe we don't need that for maintenance, which would be a surprise to me, but that would be your call in terms of whether, how the roads manage. But I think it's just, it's got to be pure, it's got to be simple, it's got to be that. The other projects, we got to figure those out separately. Need to make this easy and simple for the community to feel comfortable, and then we also follow that up with very concise, clear communication about what we're doing, and this, this is what, this is what your vote gave you this year, and this is what it gave you this year. Think that we have that ownership, that responsibility of communicating back how we work good stewards. And, you know, in two years, we'll have a different council, then we'll have a different one, we'll have a different one. Things can change. We get this out there to the voters, they can only, council can only change it if the voters change it. So one, you know, and, no, that's a problem. I don't add it in that sentence.
One point I think is important to understand with this ordinance, this is what we do right now, and it's something that you don't normally see in city ordinances, but it is done on occasion. It's what we call a conditional enactment. We will, if you agree, we'll be bringing this to you in conjunction with the fire agreement, and asking you to act on it, but it does provide by its terms that in the event the voters do not improve inclusion, it's automatically repealed, as if it didn't exist. This will go into effect only if the voters approve inclusion. That's why we call it a conditional enactment. So I want council to understand that, and that includes the mill reduction. The mill reduction is conditional. If the voters do not approve the South Metro inclusion, this ordinance provides the mill reduction doesn't happen.
And Mayor, to your point, I think it's important to know that this will address some of our maintenance needs, but it certainly is not going to eliminate the capital funding concerns that we have for the city as a whole.
No, you're right at that point.
You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, I mean, and that's where I just don't want to muddy that for the community either, because we've been clear about that message, and we just need to stay clear about that message.
And I already see us taking a big step, so the step of saying, this money is dedicated to transportation, infrastructure, maintenance, et cetera. So I think that's already a big step from where we were, because before, and that's the point that I was trying to make, is by choosing to do this, we are consciously saying our priority is improving our infrastructure, whether that's maintenance, curbs, whatever it may be, but it is a conscious directive that that is our number one priority, because obviously, that over the 17% is going to be much lower now, that then again, we'll still have the 100 other projects. So I already think we're taking that big step by saying we are committed to providing this money for transportation improvement.
And that's a direct reflection of what the community has been telling us for a number of years, that that is their priority too, and they want us to make that their priority. And I think the other thing that it doesn't, you kind of indicated this in that, Karina, is that it sets, it sets the game plan. It sort of says, okay, so we've been screaming this, and now this is how we're going to take care of that. We still have to take care of these things, and we're going to work on ways to do that, and whether that's change the reserve balance, or get money from the state, or, you know, go to the voters and ask for some additional, whatever that is, we're going to work on those problems over here too. And messaging that, that we're recognizing, recognizing where the issues are, what the problems are, and taking care of them. And these are really things that are just, they are long-term solutions to really, a problem that has been neglected and is now becoming less of an issue and more of a crisis. I mean, honest to God, that service center, every, if a wind comes up, I worry about that thing going down. Just, there's just some things that we just cannot continue to kick around.
Snow lines.
Duh.
It's such an issue today.
But we don't get snow. We get a heavy spring storm.
My final statement in all that we've talked about this evening, I think, you know, we've kind of just discussed that, yes, this is something that we're supportive of, we know it needs to be done. How we are communicating this tie to fire, because again, when I looked at the numbers and the statement that I made, was a really clear and easy statement to say, unification will save us money. Unification will give us better service. So I don't want to muddy up that language, because it's important that people, the first decision they're making is, should we unify fire? So I'm a little sensitive to how we're adding this to any of that language, and that's, you know, more down the road, but it's just, I want it to be clear that our first goal is to ensure that unification becomes successful for the city of Littleton. If that doesn't happen, then none of this other stuff can happen, so I just don't want to muddy the waters there.
Now, we, more to come, obviously, this is not part of tonight's conversation, but we have hired an advertising agency who is going to help work on messaging to the community what we are talking about now, what this looks like, and then eventually will help, I think, probably work with messaging the campaign, perhaps?
Correct. The facts.
Well, the facts, because we have to step out when it comes to campaign fairness.
Yeah, campaign fairness.
Yeah, so we have to, the city, we can't spend tax dollars on campaigning, obviously, but up until then, we do need to get that message out. And so this agency is working on exactly how to do that.
Assuming you, tonight, decide you want to advance this table third.
Which brings us to that. So the question is, do we want to direct staff to advance the fire agreement and some of the comments that we've made this evening, and the ordinance for public funds? Peggy?
Yes.
Karina?
Yes.
Seven out of, not a vote.
No.
It's not a vote. It's like the five second.
Drop, put it back up and threw it in her mouth.
That's right.
I do see it as the consensus by now.
Yes, thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you, Council.